Open up to public comments or any people from the public that wish to speak on anything public.
Agenda item for billing, uh possibly to the taxes for Tony's place out of the lake. I'm assuming it's Tony's. Um, he's probably our worst nuisance place out there, although he's not our only one. Um, but we as an association started this process. I want to say it was as early as 2015. As at the time we owned the three lots next to the property, which I couldn't even get a bite on because his place was in such disarray. So in 2015, we organized a group of neighbors and members of the board to come down and do a cleanup, which we spent the entire day there. At that time, Tony did leave, live there. He did come out and participate a little bit. He seemed appreciative of the efforts. Um, but I don't think he picked up another item in his yard since 2015. So in 2019, um, there was a complaint form. We have a complaint form as part of our association rules. That if you want to complain about something prior to bringing it to the county, we request that they bring it to our association and then we try to work with the property owner to fix it up. So you guys don't get all of our dirty laundry. Um, so in 2019, a form was filed. It was sent on to, um, well, Ross Peterson, who you should have a letter from that Heather forwarded on. He did a little checklist and visits with the owner and ta-da. And we sent him a certified letter at that time, which we know he got, but we heard no response from him. So then we filed the form with the county and at that time the previous sanitarian, I don't think we got any follow-up with. So in 2023, I think we filed a second one. Maybe it was before that and Chris Barron's got involved and he did come out. It wasn't 21 and he did come out and took some pictures and we did get the property cleaned up. The county did hire a firm to clean that up. And since then, a neighbor has continued to mow the property. Otherwise, since 2015 on, the property would have never been mowed. But over time, things just get worse and worse. So we're to a point again where there are critters. And our friendly raccoons are going in and out of the, the home again. So we would really like to see you follow up and charge his taxes and continue the process of following up and making sure that property gets taken care of or condemned would be a wonderful outcome. So on behalf of the association, thank you very much for all your work.
Discuss and approve the 12 eight 25 regular minutes and the 12 eight 25 special minutes. Been moved in second? Addition is a correction for good. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Ben.
Been out and about for taking care of snow. So, um, Saturday got quite a good snow on the south half of the county. Um, on Saturday, trucks were focused on their pavements. Uh, Sunday had everybody come, come in, um, and clean up their gravels, uh, for drifting and that sort of thing. So, um, this week will be, will be a little bit of a sloppy mess with the way the, uh, temperatures are going. So, um, but we'll be using that time to get some salt and sand all kind of stocked up again and bear for what's next when we've gotten the average of the average snowfall we've gotten in the past however many years, uh, already coming up mid before even Christmas. So that's a little bit different than, uh, winter's past we've had. So, um, always since I've been here. So, um, and then I have, uh, two purchase agreements for, um, some right away, um, for E four full replacement project. That's just West Elbron, uh, wooden box there that we're gonna be replacing that wooden box with a concrete cast in place.
One question, Ben, did the guys get all the gravel roads done yesterday? I know like ours still back to hard, like the normal box instead of hard surface, you know?
Never mind. I didn't have a view that they needed. Still touch on today.
Drivable anyway?
Drive.
Yeah.
They're pushing back today.
Yeah, pushing back today.
Okay.
Why it need?
Get a change to pay. Some Canada.
Sunday is about just seven to three thirty kind of close. Couldn't have the what's up on Saturday, just for the fact that was by the time I was trying to get them in there. Give me one round or night. Well, I mean, one round to get their whole route. So Sunday was as far as get their whole route.
All right.
I wanted to know which one was personal agenda, but, um, yeah, have a utility permit for the REC. Pretty straightforward. They're replacing all those holes and then back.
Just replacing.
Yeah.
Second, to prove the utility permit for any. See. I'll fail. Warren. So that.
Did you do that?
Yeah.
Second anyway, so we just have the weather. Once more. Just saying addition right away from Wayne Raven. On E forty-four bridge replacements, Sergeant Ember BRS and authorized chairman decided to. By the right. Second discussion. Discussion?
Negative.
Second?
Not, not second or first.
This one Ben's pretty straightforward too.
Yeah, it's just, um, this is the normal sites now. You know, there are questions, sixteen hundred. Lots of stuff. Uh, point one, two acres of permanent and then point one, three acres of temporary.
Okay.
For the construction aspects of it.
Already. Just for clarification, just one, when you bring these to us, we, we understand that you already looked through them and this is what your recommendation. I hope that's what you, your understanding is to, and, um, you spend more time with, with that, you know, and we rely heavily on your judgment forward. There are, we serve ourselves, but we just want to make sure that that's, that's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops. Motion carries. The next one is the same, except for with.
Pretty much the same, same, um, point one, two acres for permanent and point one, three for temporary.
Regime motion exactly purchases. Okay, agreements from Steve Castle and authorized chair design.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. There it goes. Thank you.
And now just to do the letter, correct? Yeah. Yep. Yep. And I, I talked to Russ and also called Chris Barron's too. And he's working with Brett Heron on the condemning side of it. You know, that would come from the county attorney. So we're just doing our part here, but it sounds like Chris is still doing some.
Yes. And we again appreciate the efforts very, very much.
Yeah. I think we were already paying for the mowing from last year.
So Kristen.
He's in less we want to push, you know, I know he's been working for a while with Brett.
Staying simple justification document wise, aside, before I would have uh, before I would vote to approve something like that, I would want something in place. I think our auditors, the new auditors have made that pretty clear. Everything, every dollar that goes out has got to be done. And so if we'd have a bill, you know, for what that is, but what's directing that bill? I guess, uh, if there's a policy in place, you know, or the ordinance, if there's some, some way that you can point out in the ordinance that this is the the way that it's done, we'd have to probably get bids and that kind of stuff. I'm not opposed to doing the right thing. Just do it in the right. And so we have to kind of rectify whatever's been going on in the past money wise, but I'd open it up for discussion or.
Is this comment?
Would you with the himself?
Yes, Phil.
So what it sets a precedent, but I think that we have to fix whatever is there to satisfy what the auditors have recommended. Saying this is what he agrees to do. This is what we need. We've signed off on that and then we can prove the payment for that as long as it's I think the framework has to be done first. Same, you know. But some if they go.
So we still need to like backtrack, like whatever was agreed upon the past, we still need to send this letter to Brett and get him paid, but then going forward after those 30 days, then we're looking for bids and contract.
But I think the contract before you send any money out would be.
For back pay though, or for the next time?
For whatever is agreed upon. If, if we agree to pay him for whatever he has done, then that's part of the contract. And then we get, we fix it going forward. I think that we have unless we can't get.
As I say, I would have.
That falls under like the township authority. So whatever.
Just chase our lawn money. I mean, it's been a bad property since before 2015. If alls we do is continue to sending bills, we keep the law yard looking nice. The house is still deteriorating. It's still an eyesore. We have raccoons running in and out. I mean, it's a campground area. It's a beach. It's a, we need to take a long-term control of the property and just not chase our tail.
Think they're working up, it's taking, so is there, I mean, is it in Brett's role to do that? And can we help push that along from our side? Any, I guess. Be another question, you know?
I would agree with a hundred percent. Said, we dealt with this just the two years I've been here. Three now, but at least three times, two or three times, you know, so.
So when they can't get. So it's very difficult. It's a difficult law term though. So we weren't women's to, to try to enforce. And so I'm sure that that's kind of the back and forth with Kristen. Because it, it is very difficult. Uh, and I know it's not a, not a good sign of sanitation, you know, raccoons running in it, you know, and unless they're getting into, you know, um, there's people in there living and, you know, then it becomes more, more of a sanitation issue. If it's a safety issue for fall risks or collapse or those kinds of things and people getting hurt, that's, that's when the county would probably get involved. And so we'd have to rely on Chris, who is the public health safety officer and the sanitarian. I think that falls under his purview under the code to report to us and he hasn't even um, brought it to us. We, we do need to monitor, make sure that we don't have any liability. If, if there is some way to, to rectify the situation. It's unfortunate because there's many properties in the county that are this way. Um, he spends most of his time doing sanitary suits and that kind of stuff. This kind of falls under his purview too. But I'd like to hear, hear from Chris and, and Brent and see where they're at on it. Post on it until next week. Think that, uh, it's just by one opinion. And so you guys can do what you. So.
Details and it might need a little more info.
It had it from Chris's and our organization's perspective, not.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Should not wait long on each side. What I like.
Especially when complaints are coming in and they've come in twice and such, so.
Position, I was told I could. Long I kept it under thirty to catch up with stuff and to learn the positions and all the extra duties that were going with it with the new ordinances and updated ordinances. Um I've been trying to lower it every week, two out of the last third weeks I've kept it under twenty hours, however, um it was a busy summer. And we do have multiple ordinances that we're working on going forward. Um so. Due to that, the original salary budget being so low, um it looks like I am at the end of salary budget for zoning right now. Um if I'm supposed to be clocking in and out separately for weed, I was never done that. So if there's weed salary, I don't know how that discusses.
Okay. Dollar is discussed. But she needs to be letting you know, you guys know, like, how do you know to draw from the salary of weeds together? Oh, so it's all together, so she has.
Understanding that.
So she has the weeds budget too that she could also use for Sally.
Which we've already.
You've been used. Okay. Sure.
So calculating with my wages and then, um. With making it a maximum of twenty five going forward, hopefully I'll be working to keep it as low as possible, but. Uh just to cover twenty five hours moving forward, um my salary requirement would be twenty two thousand two hundred fifteen. Uh plus there's a county zoning. Service conference that I would like to attend this spring, it would be, I believe, in May, uh which is a hundred fifty dollars. We're planning to have approximately. I'm guessing nine to ten zoning commission meetings between January and June, which would be another five hundred dollars in publications. Um and then we were still looking at the zoning survey, we can discuss if we want to not move forward with that before the new fiscal year or not. Believe they mentioned that'd be about three hundred dollars to do the survey through Survey Monkey, we can look at other options. Um so that would put my uh estimate uh budget amendment request at twenty three thousand two hundred. To get me.
In addition to. What's already been budgeted?
It's. Be. Not the total, but that would be the total more than I.
Know what you have left in.
It's had two thousand seven hundred ninety three remaining, but I believe the weed budget also included next spring, we have to do the publication posting, which is almost a full page. Um. I can work on narrowing that down, but including all the weeds that are that are necessary, there is a lot of board even involved in that. Uh. And then in the spring, weeds will pick up again, so I believe the weed budget, we don't want to dip into too much more.
That's a zero, I'm saying.
Tuesday.
That does owe to the budget amendment.
Yeah, what would be the date that we would run out then?
Think it was gonna be the next payday. So I mean, either way, she should probably get.
But for.
Yeah.
But for if you stuck, you're already taking many of the. When in commission.
The way it's set up in that.
This is.
Very.
Boys, yeah.
So how does she get paid if the budget runs out?
Is paid.
You're just out of the general basic.
Yeah.
It's just that she.
Goes negative.
Yeah.
And.
Well, yeah, you get budget, it came in after it was budgeted.
Yes.
But you money for salary from any of the lines, correct?
So. The way the budget works is yes, you can use, you still don't pick it out of a different line, it's still coming out of the salary line, so yes, as long as you're still within your budget. Right now the salary line for zoning is already negative, um but the total budget remaining is four thousand for zoning and twenty seven hundred for. For weeds.
So yeah.
Currently, the salary is already negative and and that four thousand is overall budget and not this under salary.
It's additionally, you have six thousand before we get the.
Which will give you about to January.
Six thousand to get you through to January.
When she had the budget.
Yeah, you did the do the budget. To have another coverage to the budget amendment. I said. Just. Just a special one for her. Otherwise, we don't need to do budget amendments till like April. So.
Oh.
So, and like.
We get that, we get ding for budget amendments too, and so, I mean, that's also part of an audit, so either way.
Yeah.
Choose a new voice, I guess.
Yes, I'm gonna say, and budget amendment you do is a little costly because you're doing publications.
Yep, together for the publications, if we were doing it for each different department.
Do they just ding you once, or do they, do you continue to be? It's not. Very sure it's happened every single.
Yeah. Not to have to go through the whole publication process, but I it's. I'm fine with doing it, it just would be better to financially to do them all at once, go into the hole if we need to, and then make sure that we fund it. We didn't realize, I mean, we knew. Going into it when we heard that there were going to be a lot more hours, we knew we were going to be in this position, so it's not that huge surprise. And this, this includes, this was the allotted, this doesn't include the tip, this is what's a ten percent that'd be up there. No, because it's a budget, it's just last hour, so.
You're meaning the ten percent that was held back that she's already got that, you think?
Yeah.
It's a chance of that, that's.
Okay, we'll know.
So, says.
So do we want a motion to update the zoning weed budget amendment during the budget amendment time, which is April, April or May time period?
Okay. So we just keep the.
Keep paying and continue to pay.
Okay.
I mean, unless we want to talk time.
It just, we just go to the hole. With nothing operational in chains. Except for the. So it's a. It did. So either.
So which way is the best, like auditor?
It's just a matter of.
Being it.
Just a matter of cost to. To publish it.
Right.
And.
So if we wait till the public time we do then. But. Six.
So the motion would be for the zoning and weed commission department to wait till budget amendments in April, May time period, and we will continue to pay. A salary for our zoning weed commissioner um in the meantime.
So.
Sixty two. Seven, six two period. So. Central Iowa Juvenile Defense Center meeting via Zoom. Because of conditions, uh the main issue out of there, they have a new executive director. See Ruth. Who is working asleep. So it's. Okay. So. Same. She's getting the. Seventeen. Ten. Change.